Hey, welcome back. For us is welcome back. We opened at 5:30 and adjourned to executive session. And now we're returning to public session. We'll welcome each and every one of you here to the 12th, excuse me, the March 12th meeting. We're gonna open our meetings tonight. Kim Blackson's gonna give an inspirational moment. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I want to share a quote from Robert Louis Stevenson who said, "Don't judge each day by the harvest you reap, but by the seeds you plant." As educators, Richland 2 reaps a harvest like no other. Whether we see the harvest on a daily basis or don't see the harvest until the end of the school year, we can't stop planting seeds. We educate, we encourage, but above all, we inspire. Tonight, let us remember that we are planters and we are working together to prepare our students' future. I would like to ask a couple of young men to come up from Boy Scout Troop 202 to help lead in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs. One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's say their names and what's...
Wayne Fletcher, Kelly Mill Middle School.
Jack Payne, Kelly Mill Middle School.
Tyler Jefferson, Kelly Mill Middle School.
Andrew May, Kelly Mill Middle School.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have the approval of our current, our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
Yes.
Motion is second. Any discussion, changes? I will let Ms. Anderson have a brief moment before the dress code discussion tonight, just to talk about a trip she took. It's not a voting item, so I'm taking the privilege on this one. Vote, please. There it is. Thank you very much, 7-0. This time, we have a consent agenda that we approved, which includes minutes from previous meeting, budget updates, student admission requests, student admission requests into the district's adult educational program, a student PE waiver, and matification of personnel. We'll hear a motion to approve our consent agenda.
The approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Back to her.
Back to her second. Any discussion of our consent agenda or questions? Hearing none, let's vote. I did twice, I think. I had something, yes. Came up twice, so I don't know what that means. It means I didn't get counted, I guess. Okay, thank you very much for approval of that item. At this time, we're gonna have our student learning time. Dr. Broshue?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dr. Fleming. At this time, I'd like to call on Sunmalet, our chief academic officer, to please introduce our student learning report for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Broshue. We are delighted to have tonight with us several CAPS scholars. That's Center for Accelerated Preparation, and a service learning project that turned into a sweet success. We're gonna let the students talk a little bit about how they got their business started. And first, I'd like to introduce the lead teacher, principal. We have Teresa Count Davis, who will introduce the boys and girls.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And please take a moment to watch this short video.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jayla Anderson, and I would like to introduce my fellow CAPS scholars, Rihanna Holmes, Colby Gilyard, Ashlyn Moise, and Kevin Zunia. Crunchstone Cookies was founded in the 2010-2011 academic year with the help of a pre-adoptive teacher and a career specialist. This company was created to enhance awareness of entrepreneurship and to expose CAPS scholars to the fundamentals of mathematics as they relate to real-life skills.
The CAPS scholars collect data regarding the amount of money and the type of items students purchase from the vending machines. They researched the many options that could fill the gap. Students determined they would market for hot-baked cookies. A free product was not going to happen, and we studied to determine what our market would bear for this product. Students spent at least $1 on drinks and Rice Krispie treats. We believed that they would agree that two hot cookies for $1 was a better bargain. We determined several CAPS scholars had allergic reactions to chocolate chip cookies, and we added sugar cookies to our selection.
Our company has a few departments. Our marketing and sales department is responsible for making sure our customers are aware of how delicious our product is and placing information around the campus regarding the cookie sales. Cookies are sold every other week. This gives scholars an opportunity to earn their own money to purchase cookies, and it does not tax parents. We have three CAPS scholars who have been training, soliciting cookies, orders, and collecting funds. We also solicit sales from transportation and our neighbors.
Our financial officer ensure all orders and funds are correct. Our financial goal was to raise $300. We kept a spreadsheet of sales and shared this information with the bake, our baker, who then prepared a correct amount of the product. This ensured we do not lose money through the incorrect sales. This ensures we do not, they also keep in account of our profits and expenses. The company was granted seed money of $150 this academic year.
During our math assistance class, we, we received, we reviewed strategies for increasing sales. Determine the total sales, expenses, and discuss entrepreneurship. Our sales increased each week, and based on our data, we can infer that chocolate chip cookies are best-selling. Through our work, we discover our profit margin is 64%.
Our Valentine Day cookie sales help us exceed our financial goal. Our profit will assist in funding our end-of-the-year academic celebration and improving care package for our adopted soldier in Kuwait.
All first-year CAPS scholars are involved in the success of Crunchstone Cookies. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for our cookies.
Any questions from the board? Just comments? Why the 60% profit margin?
Mr. Chairman, we need to raise taxes on this group.
I recommend that you advertise outside of your school because we would support you.
Thank you.
We would buy cookies from you. Let us know when.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we have their wonderful math teacher with us, Ms. Karen Butler, a part of this wonderful opportunity for our students making real connections with math and with economics. So, thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Who's the instructor on teaching them how to bake the cookies? Who taught them how to bake the cookies?
Who taught you how to bake the cookies?
Our career specialist teacher.
Their career specialist teacher.
Oh, very good job. Oh, she can stand too.
She's here, yeah.
Would you please stand some?
I bet you, boys and girls, are real proud of yourselves. Are you? We're proud of you also. Thank you.
A lot of people don't know how to run a business when they graduate from university or dental school either. So, let me tell you that. I've experienced that sometimes. Thank you very much for your report tonight. Well, now is our time for public participation. Did anyone sign up? Does anyone, would anyone like to address the board this time? Anyone at all? Well, you do get a second chance, so we'll go on with our voting on executive session items. Vote on student expulsions, excuse me, student appeals. Do I hear a motion for student appeals?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny the appeal for student number one.
Second?
I don't go all the way through. I was just making sure.
Why'd you pause?
I go slow because I get out of, get too fast.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you. Students number two through seven, Blythewood Academy. Student number eight, deny the appeal. Student number nine, Blythewood Academy with Lareda. Student number 10, refer to the IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Student number 11, Blythewood Academy. Student number 12, refer to the IEP team at Hannah Boyd. That concludes my motion for this time.
Second?
Second, Ms. Anderson seconds the motion. Any discussion of the motion by Mr. Manning? Seeing no hands, whenever you're ready, you can put the motion up and we'll vote.
I'm sorry, which one do you?
Manning. Should have, have it up on the screen. Anybody vote? Thank you, 7-0 for that motion. Is one more student on the list? Do I hear a motion about that student?
Chair, I make a motion that student number 13 refer back to their home school with support services from the family services program. Intervention.
Do I hear a second for that motion? I'm sorry. Second. Okay, this time, there's, is there, this is open for discussion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion? Are you ready? Ready, bud. Okay, there were five, five yays and two nays, and motion passed. Okay. Our next agenda item tonight is new business. I am going, Mrs. Anderson asked me to give a report on a conference she attended last week, and I told her to keep it short, brief. And I will, because this is, this is, I'll just went ahead and gave you that privilege, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to talk about the opportunity that I, I took to go to Charlotte last week to the, I never pronounce it correctly, Sylaxie? Sylaxie? Sylaxie, T, whatever. Anyway, because I've heard so much controversy about the program, I personally wanted to go see for myself what it was all about. And I'm very glad that I did go because I've heard so many different type comments. I personally think that it's a very excellent workshop. I had the opportunity to work with the superintendent, principals in the district, administrators in the district, the lead teacher, I mean, lead nurse, the lead social worker, or I'm not sure what their titles are. But, and then I also had the opportunity to visit the different class designs. They have four different designs that the teachers and other people were in. And in each room that I went into, they all appeared, in my opinion, to be very engaged in what they were working on. I think in order for this to really be effective and good in District 2, it's going to take every principal, every teacher, the entire district is going to have to buy into this to make it effective. We can't have one school doing one thing and another school doing another thing. At the end of the first day, Dr. Broshue had a debriefing with all of the teachers in District 2, and they would not speak, wouldn't say anything. I don't know whether that was because she introduced me as a board member or whatever, but then after they didn't say anything, I explained to them my purpose for being there, and the hands just shot up in the air. We got so much excellent feedback that we had to cut it off because we were keeping them away over, overtime. But the bottom line, some of the concerns were if they were gonna get the support they needed from their principals, if this was gonna be a fly-by-night change, and then in two years, we're changing to something else. They were concerned with having adequate time to get together to do their staff development. And some principals are having them read different books, different other things. But they need to just concentrate on this one design in order to get it right. Because in order for us to keep up with today's, the global world, global economy, we are going to have to educate our children the way they learn. Children do not learn the same way they learned 20, 30, 40 years ago. And if we continue to do the same thing that we've been doing over and over and over, and we're getting the same results over and over again, it tells you to step back, look outside the box, and do something different. And I strongly, strongly suggest that we all get on board. Sometimes we get complacent in our positions. As a nurse, I've seen it. Sometimes we are afraid of change, and sometimes we don't want to change. But whatever the reason may be, I think everybody needs to do some soul searching that is not on board with it. Do your soul searching and say, are you in it for the kids? Or are you just in it to be for the paycheck? And if you're not in it for the kids, I think you might want to look at a different, what is the word I'm looking for? A different occupation, for lack of a better word. Because for me to get up at 6 o'clock every morning and they can vouch for me, I was down there early in the mornings, had my coffee, except one morning, the coffee in the room was horrible. But it was, it was just an exciting time, and to meet people from all over. It's Washington State, I mean, they were from everywhere, and we worked in different groups. Board members worked together, superintendents, principals, worked in groups from people all over. And basically, people throughout the United States are having the same problems in education. We have to learn who our who's are in order to teach those students. Because if you have a classroom of 20 students, all 20-year students are not going to be quick learners. So, this program is to help you design a program so that you can teach each level of children that you have in your classroom. Because you're gonna have some children who are gonna learn regardless. You're gonna have those average learners and those below average. So, I would encourage you to buy into it, make it work. It will work. The negative comments that I've heard, I no longer care to hear anymore because I've gone to see for myself, not only did I just sit in our session, but I visited every session that was there. So, that's Melinda Anderson's view of it, and I probably will go to one other just to be sure. But I, I want you to, Barbara's gonna keep me in a minute, told me two minutes. But I would encourage my fellow board members to go. If you don't take my word for it, go. It's worth it. It's stepping outside of the box, and we've got to reach our children today. And I guarantee you, it's not going to happen overnight. But once we get this fully implemented, we will definitely see some results increasing in our test scores and our graduation rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, and we'll have a special called Board Focus from now on, okay? Literally, I do want, I would, Board Focus. That's good. That's what you did.
I'm not getting up at 6 o'clock in the morning.
But my point is that when board members do attend special conferences, I wish they would ask me to give a report. I'm interested. I did not go. I'm always, always interested to hear what, and I think the rest of the board is too, to hear what board members are doing, attending conferences. Thank you very much. Now, we get into our report on a dress code. Dr. Broshue, who's gonna do that for us?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna call on Cheryl Washington. She has been working with a team of principals and others from student services as they are in the early stages of discussion of dress code, what, what has been working, where we need some changes, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Washington.
Thank you, Dr. Broshue. As you understand, and it was discussed at the last board meeting, and Dr. Fleming, you said it well, this is a process. It's not a one-time thing. It's a process that we have to go through and look at our dress code and see where we are. Included in your board packet was the summary of information gathered from our schools and our principals for your review, for your discussion this evening. Principals compiled and submitted the information to the school-level representatives. We have Mr. Jeff Williams here from elementary, Dr. Randall Gary from middle, and Mr. Keith Price from, from the high schools. At this time, Mr. Potts, Jeff Potts, is going to present an overview of the process used and the results of that process. And we have the other principals here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, over the last couple of weeks, Richland 2 schools sought feedback from school stakeholders regarding the dress code policy. They use interviews, focus groups, and surveys to gather feedback from parents, staff, and the students regarding the awareness of the current policy, how they believe, people believe the dress code policy impacts the learning environment, and, and to gather other information about the desired changes that may, there may be. In all, I believe there are almost 5,000 students that were surveyed or participated in a focus group, over 1,300 parents, and well over 800 staff members. And as Dr. Washington said, the principals are here tonight to answer any specific questions that you have regarding that.
So, we're now, what are these questions?
Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
I don't know that I have questions. One, few comments. One, I was happy to see the sagging pants concern from everybody. I think that it just presents the wrong image of our schools and our students. The hat thing, I think that was kind of something that was on the fence. I'm, I'm fairly progressive, but I'm, I'm still a little old-fashioned. I don't think hats and things covering students' heads should be allowed in the schools. More from a safety perspective, I think, than anything, but, but I'm, I think it's, I like the idea of it. You know, let's be progressive. They're gonna deal with this stuff in college, and might as well get them used to it. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. And I just want to know, were the surveys mailed out to the parents? Or were the parents just randomly selected as they came into the schools?
Yes, ma'am. The middle school level, as it stated on here, there were different methods done at each school. But for the most part, the surveys that were done, for the most part, were done online through Google Docs. Not through Google Doc, but there was an email link where they were able to participate in the survey for parents. Also with the students, and in most schools with the teachers as well.
I'll just add to that. In addition to the electronic surveys that went out to students, faculty, and parents, there were also a discussion group, like school improvement councils, that were engaged in the discussion as well. So, there were some that was a survey sent out to random folks, and others employed an opportunity to engage in a back-and-forth conversation about, about dress code.
And I'll ditto that. At the elementary level, we had some ETO boards involved as well, so we got a good distribution of community awareness.
Mr. Chairman, what, how, how did we survey the parents, students, and teachers at the alternative school? Or did we consider the alternative school?
I believe the alternative school, they have a set uniform that they wear, and so they were exempt from this.
All right. I just question Mr. Jackson. Do you want to include?
Well, I would, sure, of course. I would love to hear what they think. They were required to wear a uniform. I'd like to know how the teachers and the principals feel, just as we asked the elementary, middle, and high. I'm not sure why we exempted them. That's all I'm...
We'll have Mr. Mills come up to that.
The only thing, when I set up the, when I sought for that alternative program, Mr. Jackson, the reason that they were to wear uniforms was to teach them self-respect, starting out with self-respect. That was years ago when we first...
That was years ago when we first implemented the program. And I, I was under the assumption that we must learn to respect ourselves before we can respect, learn to respect other people. And I thought if they would go dressed in a uniform, that would make them feel good about themselves and it would help improve their behavior. So that's why, I guess, on behalf of the administration staff, they didn't go there because that was almost a set thing that went along with the alternative program. It's part of the purpose for the program, they have to go like young ladies and young men so that they can learn to respect other people.
It would have been good to have the alternative school validate that, that's what the survey would have done, that's all I'm saying.
But we can still do that.
No, that's no big deal.
To add to that, we did not participate necessarily in the traditional school survey of the regular clothing that they wear. We did have a conversation about a month ago as a faculty and staff about our dress code because we have our individual issues as well. They may at times want to wear tighter tan pants or sagged those pants. We've had the same conversation at the alternative school and live by the fact that because it is an alternative school and a program, you know, certain things are done differently, certain privileges are gone away, you know, in regards to the uniform, once they return to their school, and they go ahead and fall in line with the rules of the school. But we did, I do bring that to their attention, they did not participate in the survey, but I've been keeping them aware of what's going on in the schools that they're going to return to, so they're aware of the leggings, the jeggings, and things of that nature.
I would have to agree with Mr. Jackson. I think we should include them because eventually they do return back to their home schools. And maybe with what Mrs. Anderson said, they're in uniforms to show respect, but they also got to go back to those home schools and show respect in what they have to wear. So I don't think we should exclude anybody in our school.
So why don't you guys go back and survey those students that are in the alternative program so that they will be aware of what the dress code would be when they return to their home schools? I make that as a suggestion, Mr. Chair.
This, my question is, it says, "Specific items in the dress code following trends occur." Which trends do you think need to be implemented? Because I know what the trends are, I don't have to do anything but drive by or walk into schools. I know what the trends are and I know what they want. They want tank tops and yoga pants, I mean, something like that. But my point is, what do, what is, what do you think will work from these suggestions? Is, there's some of these we probably cannot obviously.
I'll be happy to respond first on behalf of the high school principals and our findings and our discussion. And whenever we met with Dr. Washington, one of the things that we also did was looked at similar dress codes from other schools around the country, as well as here in the state. And we found a variance in degree. Some were very broad, very simple statement about expectations, and then others became very, very specific, with line item after line item after line item of things to look out for. And in our discussion, what we found is the more that we try to specify and the more specific, the more opportunities we're going to have to leave something out. And the more parameters that we put and the more specific that we try to be, the increase in complication it is to enforce everything. And in our discussion, our intent was to make sure that we address the things that interfere or might interfere with teaching and learning. And that's what our focus should be on. And looking at those suggestions that came back to us, we were in most agreement about when it came to things such as leggings and jeggings, that seemed to be the very popular thing across all five high schools, is what is worn over them and how far down should that come to cover up the lower body. If we were going to allow it right now, there are different, in different schools, there are different parameters about what constitutes being long enough. It's not consistent at all, all five high schools. So if there's going to be leggings and jeggings allowed and there's going to be a cover-up that would be required, we would need to have a specific parameters for what it should cover up and how far down it should go. In addition to that, everyone was unanimous, including students, including parents, including faculty and administrators, that sagging pants that show undergarments should not be tolerated or seen by anyone. Everyone is on the same page about it, including students, they don't want to see it either. So they do not want that to go away at all. Another thing that popped up is shirt tails. And there's back and forth, but most people, students and faculty and parents at the high school level would like to see that requirement go away. That's not a hard one to enforce. In addition to that, there was one about tank tops. There are some schools that say if the tank top meets three fingers, it's okay, and there are others that say if there's a tank top, it's not allowed. Students often comment, and we found a similar comment in more than one high school, that what's the big deal about showing shoulder skin? It's not, it's not a turn-on, so what's the big deal about it? So they thought, and we didn't disagree, that if a tank top is of an appropriate width, that it should be allowed, as long as it didn't expose undergarments. We kept going back to undergarments.
And wasn't there a comment from, I think, I don't know if it was from Westwood or if it was from your school, Mr. Price, about girls and stilettos, they shouldn't allow us to wear stilettos because the girls use them as weapons. Well, you can take a boot off and use that as a weapon too. So we kind of, kind of pushed that one a little bit to the side. Take it, what, yeah?
I've seen them at school, that's what I'm saying, I've seen.
I don't know how they walk in them, but they wear them.
I've seen the tank tops. It's not the tank tops from the front, it's when they turn sideways and I have an issue, okay? Because that's, that's.
And that's what we kept.
Most of the time, they're not modest.
That's what we kept going back to is, is the undergarments. The undergarment should not be exposed.
Well, it's, I mean, that's just almost impossible. I mean, that's just.
They need to wear a blouse over the tank top.
That's fine.
Something over the tank top.
Okay, my, the only other thing I was, wanted to ask, Jeff, I think, you guys didn't have much of a problem with our dress code. I didn't see, I didn't see. I mean, I read, I haven't read the stress code in years. And I read it, I read it, and I looked and I told my fellow board members, this is a pretty good document. I mean, it's not a, it's not a bad way to go. And it's not a lot. I mean, it's only one page for middle and high, I mean, maybe one page and two paragraphs for elementary is not real, but it's real prohibitive, but it seems to me it's very difficult to enforce. And I, not for you, so I'm going to let you go sideways and the other two guys come up front. Why is it so difficult to enforce what we have now? And why should I think it would be any more difficult to change and enforce something? I mean, you know, I'm just going to be honest with you.
Sir, I think at the elementary schools, students are more likely to wear what their parents tell them to wear. At the middle and high schools, especially at the high school, but even the middle schools, parents, for the most part, do buy clothing, but they learn the art of changing when they get to school and those types of things. Also, I don't know if it's a, it's a thing of life imitating art or art imitating life, a lot of what they see on television that we may deem inappropriate, students see it as a fad. And at the middle and high schools, they like to bring some of those fads into the school, and we just feel that school's not in the place for some of those. For example, the sagging of the pants, it's just one example.
And if I may add to that, oftentimes, what gets addressed can be considered borderline. And rather than focusing on what is going to interfere with instruction and what's going to interfere with teaching, the teaching and learning process, we're focusing on the specifics, and even those things that may just barely be over the limit, some people may say, oh, that's okay, and others, they say, well, it's not quite to the fingertip length. So when you get into consistent inconsistencies like that, it makes it difficult to be consistent when enforcing the dress code. In addition to that, as I mentioned, if there's a statement that focuses on what's appropriate and what's inappropriate, what's going to interfere with instruction, what's not going to interfere with instruction? It's, there are oftentimes when things come through the front door, very obvious that it's going to be an interference with instruction, those are the easy ones. But then when you start getting closer to borderline things and you're bound by several different bullets, some people make an objective review and say, hmm, that's okay, and others are very, they stick to the letter of the law. It's not exactly where it's supposed to be, therefore, it's a violation.
And what, what about parental, calling parents and stuff like that? Is that an issue with you guys to enforce, to help enforce your dress code?
About calling the parents?
Calling the parents, telling them this is inappropriate, I mean, is this, is this a big administrative issue with you guys in school, in schools? I'm just asking.
Right. And I can tell you, one of the things, I hate to bring up an old subject, but cell phones, we changed our cell phone policy this year. And we've had this conversation that when, once we modified our policy and we started allowing cell phones in certain situations, cell phones stopped becoming an issue for us in the same degree than before when they were strictly prohibited. Rather than dealing with three or four cellphone issues per day, now we're dealing with three or four cellphone issues per month and violating the policy. That reduces the time that administrators are spending on that so that they can focus on other things. With dress code, that does consume time. As far as it being a problem, I don't know how to really address if it's a problem, it's one of those things that we do. When we address things that are out of compliance with policy, it's our duty to make sure we make those contacts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you think that an unintended consequence of modifying the dress code policy in those schools where there is a uniform policy, and I'm not talking about the alternative school now, I'm talking for the elementary and middle, may cause there then to become a shift on the part of more parents and more students to want to now dress in a more liberal fashion than they are doing now because they're wearing uniforms?
I can certainly let Jeff respond to that part from the elementary schools, but one of the things that we discussed is perhaps having a distinct dress code for the different levels of schools, for elementary, middle, and high.
Almost a third of our elementary schools are uniformed schools. And I think the key is it started with the parents who wanted that, supported that. As far as their concerns for the dress code, it's just real simple, they have a uniform policy, so they don't have concerns.
But they can, they can, they can request an exemption from that.
They certainly can.
And that's my question.
Yes, sir. They can, they have that legal right to, to sign a waiver that says they do not participate in that. And many schools have those who don't participate. Yes, sir.
And so my question again was, do you think by become, developing a more liberal dress code policy, it might encourage more people to do that, is the question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
From the middle schools, there are no middle schools presently that have a uniform policy. Several years back, at Dent, we tried a, wasn't a uniform, it was a uniform standard of dress. And what made that very difficult to enforce at that time was the mandatory opt, we must provide an opt-out policy. And the opt-out policy was a little too simple to do, it was a matter of having a parent come in and sign that waiver, and then it got tough to enforce that your parent signed a waiver and your parent didn't, how did you distinguish between the two?
So, Mr. Chair, on here, you said no hats worn inside the building. And I know, I can understand the hoodies. Tell me the part about the no hats in the building.
I'm sorry, the no hats and the?
No hats. Caps worn inside the building?
I think that is the only area where middle school and high school, where, where we differed. All seven of the middle school principals all agreed that we did not want hats in the building. It did come up, for example, from Dent, maybe one or two student said it, but it was very low on our totem pole, it wasn't enough consistency for us to say it was a theme in the middle school.
I just saw it on here, the thing, that the children wanted to wear hats.
Right. With the high schools, the students wanted to have that opportunity or that option to wear hats. As far as teachers and administrators at the different schools, there was kind of mixed results. Some were, okay, it's, it's a way of student expression, that's fine, and there are others where, well, we don't wear hats in the building, that's just the way it is, we're not going to allow it, and, and that's fine. And, and right now, all that's been done so far is kind of a fact-finding mission. But the students would like to have the option to wear hats in the building and parents, parents, administrators, and faculty, they're kind of mixed on results.
Okay, and the reason I asked that, because I thought I was just old-fashioned with wearing hats and, you know, particularly males with hats on in the building, and I just wanted to see what other people thought about it because I thought it was just me.
It's a, it's there, and some are, say the same thing, and I'm the same way. Whenever I was growing up, my dad taught me when you walk in a building, you remove your hat.
Right.
And regardless of what rule is in place or not in place, that's what I'm going to do whenever I walk in a building if I had a hat on, if I have a hat on. Students today are very casual with some of their dress and they're very comfortable and that's part of their expression. And as long as it's not done in a degrading or demeaning or disrespectful manner, that would be allowed. One of the discussions that kind of spawned off of that that you talked about was hoodies. And we were all very, very consistent with, we would not want to allow hoodies to be worn because whenever a hoodie is worn, only the face is seen and from the side or behind, you can't identify a student. And once that hoodie is up, most hoodies, maybe with a difference of a few colors, look the same. Hats are more distinct and easier to identify if someone's walking down the hallway with a hat on, but he's not so much.
Keith, I wanted to ask you, and it probably got to Gary as well, what do you think about clothes that are considered too tight? Specifically tops or pants? Is that something that you could have an opinion on or is it just something you accept?
Well, right now, the way, the way the policy reads is anything that is excessively form-fitting should not be allowed. And then you get into, well, what does excessively form-fitting mean? You get variances of degrees. In my opinion, and you're asking me, and in our discussion amongst the high school principals, as long as the bottom and the top are covered, no undergarments are showing, that's what we were talking about, like, for example, yoga pants and leggings are a very popular topic with the young ladies at the high school level. And in our discussion, as long as they've got a shirt or a top or something that covers their bottom, then that would be allowed.
Well, oftentimes, they don't. So what do you do about that?
That should be addressed.
Okay.
Questions?
And at the middle school, ditto what they said at the high school, our students and even our, our teachers were, they were okay with the leggings and the jeggings, but they felt that some other garment, like a sweater or something, should go and cover the hip area. But tops, a little different, as you said, but we do address those, either through them going to the locker and getting something else that they hit because they knew it was inappropriate or calling up here.
Other questions? This is going to be a discussion, conversation we will continue on with. I appreciate your work and survey.
Where do we go from here? Are we going to, once they survey the alternative school, then are we going to have something put in place?
I think we need to get some specific recommendations.
If, if, if I may, if I may interject, we will have results from the alternative school surveys, we will have them for the next board meeting. We will also send in your board packet copies of dress codes from across the United States, where you can see some are very generic and some are very specific. So you can look at that and again, kind of compare to what we have in place. And anything else that you want us to bring forward for our next meeting to discuss, we would be glad to do, any recommendations?
Go ahead and add for the girls to get a length on the tops if they want, if we decide to go with the leggings and the, you, you guys. Go ahead and knock that one out.
Anything else? Talk about these holes in the pants, below the.
Oh, yeah. Sometimes they have the holes in the pants, and principals can attest to this, up mid-thigh, closer up towards the hip.
For example, I don't have any on, but pants will have holes high up on the legs or around the hips. But if a student is not wearing like leggings or something underneath to cover up skin, that would not be allowed.
Girls wear that too?
Ma'am.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am. It's a very common fashion trend.
So they're paying sixty-five dollars for some pants?
For torn-up pants.
I could have just pulled some bleach on this whole door.
Well, I think this is, this is good for us to know what's going on.
Eighty dollars.
I think the last thing we worried about were flip-flops, right?
Flip-flops.
In '04, when we did this policy. Mr. Chairman?
Let me see, I want to thank the folks who were involved, and Dr. Washington and others, because I, I think it's a very serious topic. I mean, I really do. I think it impacts the learning environment, it influences behavior in class, and, and being the son of a retired English teacher, I know sort of what, what it does for a teacher's ability to manage the classroom, just something as simple as dress, and particularly when you've got boys and girls together. So I take it very seriously and, and I want to commend you for taking it very seriously for going back, Dr. Washington, and getting some additional information before we make any decision. So we'll have all the information at our disposal as we discuss trying to make some changes, being consistent with what's happening in the current trends, while at the same time... the same time, maintaining the appropriate decorum in the classroom so that educational learning is not hampered. So, thank you very much.
If I might add to that too, Mr. Jackson, I, I thank you also on behalf of the high school students, for them to be asked about their opinions on things. They, they take that very seriously, and they're very appreciative. It gives them the feeling that if there's gonna be an opportunity to impact change in their behavior, there's a process in which to do that. So, um, Ms., uh, Dr. Washington asks us to be sure that we've got feedback from parents and from students, and they were very appreciative to be involved in that process too, so thank you for that.
I'm not going to ask the young lady here to stand, but I think what she has on is appropriate. Uh, Barbara just explained to me they're called leggings, and the top is coming down below her hips, so I'm not going to ask you to stand, because I don't want to embarrass you. But I think it's very, you know, it's attractive what she's wearing, so...
Everyone's gonna watch as she walks out, and none of them saying that, not if you said that.
I'll stay with you and steer with you to learn about it. She's, it's attractive, uh, uh, attire that she's wearing, so if we could model something after that, I think it would be fun.
I want to thank y'all, you two, for, all three of you, for heading your groups, and, um, this is, like Mr. Jackson says, this is a very important subject, um, because if it wasn't, we wouldn't have neglected it for ten years, we would have, uh, it was just, it's a very difficult subject, and, uh, thank you for what you do, and we'll continue the conversation.
Dr. Fleming, one quick comment if I may, in the middle school principals' meeting this morning, they said, maybe we should have a fashion show to show the board what these trends look like. Perhaps we should, just so that...
Perhaps you should, Barbara will be, she'll work some more. What'd you call those things you said you're going?
Okay, let's, uh, let's be digressing here.
Thank you.
All right, now that was, uh, now we're going to discuss agenda items for next meeting and for future meetings. Our next meeting will be, uh, March twenty-sixth, well, actually, well, not, it will be March the nineteenth, and it's a work session for the board, uh, that will be publicized with an agenda in the next few days. Six o'clock, at the district office, six, on the nineteenth. Then our next, um, full board meeting will be on the, uh, twenty-sixth of March, at Conder Elementary School. Uh, Dr. Brochu, what type, what items do we have on the agenda?
Uh, thus far, we have student learning report, uh, we will continue to report on the dress code, uh, we will have a report from our budget design team, and we will be hearing about efficiencies and effectiveness from finance, and we will also be hearing a report regarding the revenue estimate for the fiscal year 2013, 14. Oh, and one other item that, um, Mr. Davis and I discussed, we will be, uh, coming forward with information regarding on sale.
Mr. Davis, we have a timeline, I know you've given us a timeline for the budget, you might go into county council, about being part of next, through, for next time.
Yes, sir, it will. In addition to the revenue forecast, and, and I, I bring Dr. Brochu, I won't know what the, the local village revenue allowed in Ractree A is until at least Thursday morning. I will be calling the lady at the Budget Control Board Thursday morning, does that calculation, so I'll get it as soon as I can, we'll have it here next meeting, we will talk about the timeline for the budget, uh, very simply, proposing to do revenue forecast next time, and we'll also have the budget, uh, as you said, the design team report on the budget, and then at your first meeting in April, we'll have actually three proposed budgets for the board's consideration, and at the fourth Tuesday in April, hopefully the board will be able to reach a consensus approved budget. The budget is due to county council by May tenth.
And when will we have our public hearings?
The, uh, public hearing would be before the first meeting on the, uh, in April and before the second meeting, as past prologue.
Any other items to bring up, uh, that we need to, uh, put on the future, the future agenda?
You know what, I, I don't need it right away, but I'm hearing that we have some classrooms as much as thirty, thirty-five classes in it. I want to find out what's going on with some of those classrooms, why they're over-prowdy. Can't teach with thirty, thirty-five kids in a student classroom. Um, I was always under the impression that we have a low teacher-student ratio, but I'm finding out that's not true in all of our classrooms.
I'll defer to Dr. McDaniel, but the bo- board has had reports on that previous agenda. Glad to read this, sir? I think we have a report last week.
We'd be happy to look into that, we, we, you know, there is certainly a difference between student-teacher ratio, as you well-known as Anderson, and, um, and class size, and much of it is schedule-driven and student-interest-driven with types of courses that are offered. Um, but, uh, we had a, a report, uh, uh, about a year, a year ago with Dr. Martin out at, uh, Kella, at, um, Muller Road Middle School, um, we can, and Mr. Potts has worked extensively on that effort, uh, we can, um, look at that again and float over and, and give the board an update.
I would like an update on that, because I'm hearing too many people talk about, uh, some of the classrooms are over-prowdy, and you cannot reach every child when you've got thirty-five kids and some are not, uh, quiet and nannally, like one of mine, you know, you can't, it's not going to be effective, so we, we need to revisit that.
Mr. Potts put together some very nice, uh, tables that, uh, track some of that at the school level, and, um, we can update those numbers for you, um, uh, you know, and certainly a little bit of time to, to delve into that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, now's our time for a second public, uh, participation, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board this time? Hearing that, I'm gonna go back to the, this reminds me, I'm gonna go back for a possible agenda items, about, uh, our policy states that we have two public participations, I, I would think we should visit that issue in the future without going to one, um, I s, you know, I think that's appropriate, after doing this for a long time, I, we can have it defer in the beginning or the end, but I would think one per, uh, you know, maybe per, per, uh, meeting is maybe enough, but I want the boards to input, of course, on that, and, uh, you know, see how that goes, but that's a future one.
Yeah, someone, public participation.
Okay, I'm sorry, did I, state your name, come up front, state your name, and, uh, just give, give your neighborhood or general where you, where you reside.
Hey, how's everybody doing today? Uh, Benjamin Washington, I'm a teacher accent, E.O. Wright Middle School, right up the road. Wanted to personally thank, uh, principals, any teachers, and of course the board for allowing me to be here and keep on doing what y'all are doing out there. I just want to say a couple things, 'cause I gotta go home and make lesson plans, but, um, working on the who and who's, you know, who's who in the selectee, I can personally say that for my classroom, it works. That's literally the only reason why I came in, is to say that, because I know that me and pretty much everyone in this room would not be without today, if someone did not take the time out to show them how much they care about them, and to show them how much engaging them really works. And that's literally what our selectee and IB is about, which as you know, E.O. Wright is going to IB relatively soon, we're in that transition process right now. So I just want to take a couple minutes to talk to y'all about that, and say, you know, principals and other teachers out there, you know, obviously I don't have the power to say that y'all need to do that, but you really want to rethink that whole process and think about really getting your teachers and other students and folks in that, because for my classroom, and you know how chaotic middle school can be, for my classroom, when those students know how much you care, when those students know that what I'm trying to bring to them in social studies, which y'all know some people find it kind of boring, what I bring in from outside the world is going to help them build something to the future, they like that, and they build off of that, and I can build a good rapport with those kids as well. So, you know, like I was saying, I just want everyone to rethink that whole selectee process and working on who the whole wow spiel, because it not only correlates to IB, but it also correlates to everything that we do, including this board meeting. I just think I wanted to, uh, piggyback on what some people were saying, that's all.
Appreciate your comments. We don't, we really don't respond to public participation, and I appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you having me. You're welcome. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other, um, any, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Important superintendent comments, I'm gonna start from my left and get them to my right. James?
I would just like to thank the board scouts, and I look forward to eating my cookie this evening, so thank you very much, Ms. Council.
Um, I'm really impressed with the project, because I think it not only, um, you know, teaches us, um, teaches the children about a business concept, and it's something that they could take on, you know, as they mature, um, and it's also a good little cottage industry for you all. So, um, next time, let us know. My grandson's always looking for cookies. And I appreciate the work that's being done on the dress policy and dress code, and I think it's time to look at it. Um, I was not really aware of what the kids were wearing, but I think there was a presentation by a couple of middle school kids, and I became very aware that evening that, uh, we needed to start this conversation. So, thank you all for your input on that, and let's continue our dialogue with students as well, and see if we can reach some common ground.
I want to thank the young man who just spoke, uh, appreciate that, I think he's already gone. Amber, Scott Davis program, caps, the cookies, they look delicious, and they really do look good, so I think you guys are doing really great. Those are some of the things that our children need to know once they graduate from high school, how to manage and budget, so I thought that was very good, and I glossed it, that, um, sixty-six percent, wasn't it bad? And, um, uh, in our board brief, congratulations, um, to the, uh, to Jill for her award in Grevel last weekend, she is now, um, I think you won last year, somebody, who else won? Somebody won that before, but anyway, congratulations to Jill on being the, um, Betty Blighton Officer, Office Professional of the Year in South Carolina Association of Educational Officers, Office Professionals, it's a long word, S-C-A-E-O-P, okay?
And she's now going for the national award as well.
Oh, and she's now going for national.
She's going for the national.
Well, we wish you the best of luck, and I know you represented us well in our Jolene Hall, and her, um, awards, and also for our ROTC from Spring Valley, keeps on doing it, hasn't stopped yet, and Northeast Navy, uh, came in, I think, in second. So anyway, I just want to say that I really like reading what we're doing in our district, and just to reiterate, those of you that have not participated in the program, the selects whoever the last part of it is, I want you to get involved in it and make it work in the district too, because I know it will work. Just takes the effort for everyone pulling together and working together, and I think Raf, I call you guys names out, Raf, uh, Dr. Brochu, um, Nancy Gregory, um, Mary Joyce Page, I thought we had so much dialogue going on in my group, that it was awesome, I don't know, and Tina Davis, I'm sorry, Tina, Tina, I miss you, um, everybody stand up that was in my group with me. That's not embarrassing.
That's better than leaving off the lane.
Well, that's better than leaving off the lane, Barbara said have them stand up, but, um, real quickly, just owe folks privilege, real quickly, Mr. Chairman, make you another couple of minutes.
Pretty nice.
You really have, I really do appreciate, I'm on, your daddy gonna have ten pound cakes. Um, can I hear from one of you guys, real quick, not Dr. Brochu, but one of you guys, real quick, whoever want to talk, just real quick? I'm finished for the night, sir.
Specter.
It's time Melinda took me off.
Mr. Jackson? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Richland Two family for participating in the first round of the climate survey, and, uh, as you know, there, an email's gone out to faculty and staff to ask them to volunteer to participate in several focus groups that are going to occur, and I sort of hope that you will participate in that, because in order to address what you feel are critical issues, and in order to have us know what you think are important for us to address, we need to hear from you. And so, I would encourage every teacher, every administrator, every support staff member who is really genuinely interested in the well-being of this district, to respond by indicating their willingness to participate in a focus group. If you choose not to do that, it makes our job very, very difficult without your input, and so I challenge you to participate. Thank those that did participate in the first round. The second round is going to be open to everyone, again, those who may have completed the survey, as well as those who did not complete the survey, uh, will be allowed to participate in the second round, in order to offer some very concrete and specific suggestions on ways that we can strengthen, uh, the quality of what we're doing and the relationship between and among each other, uh, within the district. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Now, Dr. Brochu?
I have just a few things that I'd like to share. First, I'd like to welcome two students that are working as interns for R2TV, Rebecca, Bexa is a sophomore at Blythewith High School, and Carl Wors is a senior at Ridgefield High School. It seems that he already has been accepted, Carl has already been accepted into the College of Journalism and Math Communications at USC for the fall. They are already shooting stories and learning to edit them, making R2TV slides and everything else about our R2TV team, uh, and what they do. So we're excited that they're with us. Also wanted to commend the folks who organized this year's district career fair, um, Mary Page Voice and, and a number of career counselors and, and others from throughout the district were really instrumental in what has turned out to be an incredibly positive experience for the students throughout Richland School District too. Uh, I know that we had several students and teachers who attended, one of our board members, I think even participated in that, Barbara Specter was one of the vendors, if you will, through the, the career fair, and, uh, had a good experience with that as well. Uh, I will tell you that it's really never too late, uh, or too early, I should say, for students to begin to think about their future, and we certainly believe career, uh, development needs to happen when students first arrive in our school district. I wanted to also invite everyone to tune in to R2TV or our YouTube channel in order to watch the debut of the district's new education affair show. Our first show deals with school safety and includes interviews with our security folks and others. The name of our show is "The Eyes Have It," which comes from inspire, inquire, and ignite, uh, in Richland Two, the eyes have it. And, uh, finally, I just wanted to make mention of, of a wonderful conference that several of us, uh, had an opportunity to attend last week, and that was something called the CEFDU Conference, and that's the Council of Educational Facility Planners International. Uh, we had a whole focus there about schools and communities and partnerships, and, um, some of you might remember, we had Jamie Vollmer here in Richland Two last fall, and Jamie Vollmer happened to be the keynote speaker, and tied the whole need for facilities, community involvement, and certainly building partnerships, um, in, in that frame. I will say that I was delighted to be on the program, talking about student learning centers with our own chair, Dr. William Fleming. We also had, uh, Mr. Ed Watson and Mr. Jack Carter from the district that presented on safety and security, and, um, perhaps it's no question, the president came from our own Richland Two, and that's Fred McDaniel, who did an outstanding job putting on the best conference that they've ever had, from everything I heard. So really a terrific opportunity for us, and, uh, really appreciate the opportunities.
I really don't have any comments, we're gonna be starting the budget next time, so I'll just say... just save most of my breath for that, but any cabinet members want to make a comment? Thank you very much. Now it's time to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, sir.
Second.
Motion is second.